Oh, that was the bulk of it.
Sorry, I didn't know you were just gonna call a break.
Isn't that great?
I know. I apologize for just getting up and... Dan, I apologize. I didn't know you were gonna call a break. No, it's all right. I felt rude then. I'm sorry.
Right, so...
Did she drop maybe for a break?
Maybe she dropped.
She may have dropped Dan and dropped. No idea.
Do whatever there is supposed to.
Real nature of this deal.
For the next three days, because I'm trying to have excavation done in my yard. Dry rain for a week. It was dry for like two, right, until we got in there.
Well, we needed the rain. It's just that when it does come, it comes all at once, doesn't it?
Yeah, I'm okay with the rain.
Can't get really... Can't get a break here.
Besides my muddy mess. I feel like I emailed all these things and I can't remember them. I need to pull that up.
In your mailbox? Workshops. How do you want to spend your summer? In them.
Was it a good...
With them. I hear you. We do. Oh, could have been campaigning track. You did a good job at it. I will say that. Yeah, it didn't pick any of the type of... No effort, no time.
Yeah.
Sound effects.
Yeah, they do that all the time.
She dropped off and said she popped back on in 9:30. Because she was just going through her phone anyway.
Should we order pizza?
Wouldn't even go there.
They gave us some ponchos and... But her business school, that was Friday. That was inside.
I'll make we dare go into closed session.
Oh, we've gone... We've started closed session probably. I've probably started closed session after 11:00 before. I mean, that's not saying we want to.
There is an update. Yep, that was our compromise.
I'm, but you wanna... Because I'd like to get out of here before midnight.
I'm... I was thinking...
I didn't worry about that. The 6:00 AM daughter wake up is...
Martha, is there something where we can't go into the next day? Like if we go after midnight?
Right, you can't towards 12:01 because that's the next day.
Don't even say 12:01. I'm talking 10:01.
That's good. Can we aim for 11? Let's aim for 11.
Do you have any idea how long the update?
Here, do you have the comments on the...
The negotiations, is it free room?
I think... You guys can start. Let me just go get some time.
I feel like I have to find that email too, because I did write those...
Yeah, I was gonna... Because I'm... At least we'll come back. Oh, you're going here. Well, we're starting without her. She knows who we are. Okay. I'm going to propose, because of everybody's schedule, let's see what we can get done by 10:15. Does that seem fair? If we can bomb through them, great. If not, we really aren't in a tremendous area. Will we close to our goal date regardless? Because we do have that update during the closed session around negotiations, and if that... I want to make sure we're not all totally dead before we start doing that.
We also have to think of people waiting over there.
Yes, so let's see what we can do in that 10 to 10:15 range. So Director Johnson or Director Bullion, either one, you want to start us out with 201.1?
Yes. Okay, 201.1. We had a couple comments. With that, Director Olsted. For your comment, will everything go into the handbook? No, everything won't go directly into the handbook. Procedures will go into the handbook. That was the big, long thing that we were gonna attempt to go into this meeting, but...
We just started, Lisa.
We pushed it.
I can hear you now.
Wow.
We just started on 201.1.
So I hope that answers your question. This is just going to address the statute itself.
Yes, my only comment, and this is... Wow, incredibly loud again. Sorry. My only comment was it was an awful lot to cut, and I just wanted to make sure that because we've had to use this policy in the recent past, that our community knows what's going into our board handbook is... It was just a lot to... It was a lot that got cut.
It is. A lot of it is directly from statute, and that's why the procedures will go in the handbook, and the handbook actually... We all will come together and approve, and the handbook will go online. So all of it is going to be completely open to the public, so it will be out there in the open for everyone to see for everything.
It's really just a change of location.
Yeah, just a change of location, so that the procedures technically aren't in the policy itself. The only other change that... Or major change was from Director Mason. To change in the actual purpose statement was to change smooth running to seamless. Efficient and... Rivers' policies to establish procedures and vacancies on expired terms and ensuring efficient and seamless.
My communications brain thanks you for that word.
Didn't love the word.
No, I love it.
Like either one of them. It's really, the school board, continuous running of the school board is what you're really after. And I don't agree with moving the policy and the procedure into the school board handbook. I believe it needs to be in here. Not only for more public purview, but also because it should be voted on separately. And obviously, the statute is vacuous again, and I don't agree with that at all. Matter of fact, I don't think it's a school board procedure per se, because it is an exception. And therefore, it needs to have a policy associated with it that's far more robust, and it has the guidelines. Now, if you want to talk about the individual procedures for voting, the individual procedures for that, but the policy has got to be in here, and there's nothing. It just says the procedure for this policy, but there is no policy. And the statute, again, leaves it up to us. So I don't agree with that at all, and I think it's gonna cause more problems than not. So the actual... The actual policy also includes not just when we consider a vacancy, but also when the vacancy... Because this is something that has gone through various iterations. And we've had this situation come up multiple times, and that's when a board member became ill for an extended period of time. And we needed a policy that was consistent. It was fair. And it required notice and a few other things that went beyond the statute that we wanted to do here. We've also had a policy that... Of how we do certain things here in form of policy. And before, our policy was non-existent, unfortunately, because we had a board that would just meet and say, okay, this is how we're gonna do it. And that became an issue last time, so I do think we need a lot more in here. Now, the actual procedure for voting can go into the... Into the board handbook, but remember that the... This... The vacancy policy is truly an exception. It is not something that you would want to go to a daily board handbook to follow on a regular basis. That is... That would be truly an exception. So I think the other thing is, is the handbook gonna be filled with exceptions? Or how do you want to define that upfront? But I don't agree with this. As a matter of fact, I remember speaking with the MSBA about this extensively. I think I had three of them on speed dial last year during this process, particularly with the legislative changes and a few other things that were going on. And all they kept saying is, you need a policy. You guys don't have a policy. We never formalized a policy. And you need one to be in a policy that's... You know, where it normally is with the thing that the MSBA highly recommends. So I don't agree with moving all of this into a procedure. I also think it also buries it from public view, which is pretty important. So that's... I feel very strongly about that.
I have something to say.
Go ahead.
My recommendation is that... Okay, first I'm wondering if someone can help me. Maybe you can, Director Johnson. We originally had 201.1 in our March study session. We talked about this. We didn't land... I kind of have notes that how... What happened in March. We moved it to April, where we approved, correct? We actually approved keeping 201.1. Martha, is that right? I know. Okay. Regardless of exactly the history, this policy we had at the March study session. And at that study session, we had added a... We had added a section, compensation. We also added a section of vacancies. That wasn't... The compensation part got moved to the org meeting policy. That has been passed. The vacancies, we... It is my belief, and we'd have to go back, but it is my belief that we actually passed that policy, and that's... We were kind of... Yes, there was an issue with that, and that is why we are here today. And my recommendation is that unless there are specific things in our policy, such as the smooth running, I think that we all can agree that that wording is a poor... That's poor word choice. But my recommendation is that we... We keep the current policy as we approved it, pending any potential edits that are brought forth tonight. So this... This 201 that we brought forward with just a purpose statement, when I'm going back to all of my notes from the March study session, it is my understanding that we actually passed 201 in this state.
In the original state.
In the original state, less whatever corrections we had from then. So this new presentation of 201.1, it would be my recommendation to keep the old... Along with whatever edits is the will of the board, because I believe we already passed this.
And by the way, if we already passed it, then we have to actually go to a board meeting and rescind the previous vote and all that, right?
And so that is what's...
And I thought so, but thank you for looking that up.
That's what's muddy. And, you know, there has been extensive amount of doing policy work, even outside of this, by Director Johnson and I. And so in trying to piece through all of the notes from March going forward.
So you did it in March, and on that April for approval is why?
We never did approve it?
We never did approve it.
I think, was this one of the ones we moved just because of time?
Correct. No, there was...
There was an issue because it was all crossed out.
I don't...
I think... I think it...
But you've already read it once, so this basically would be a second read as a study session.
We read it at the April...
In March.
At the... At the March study session.
Yeah.
And then it never came back to a regular board meeting.
Yeah, something happened with that one.
Never approved.
Well, my notes state, it was the two issues were the compensation, which we moved to the org policy, the org meeting policy, and then the other one was vacancies. And it was the... I have that it was...
I had it was included in the big... All of them read together for the ones, including the default 203, but I didn't listen to the study session.
Okay, my notes say that the board did not agree on the vacancies, whether to... We didn't... We didn't come to a consensus.
Correct.
So we had two options on there, right? We had two versions on there.
But the... One of the links didn't open.
Oh, I thought it... I didn't have that problem, but okay.
Oh, well, I couldn't open one of the links. So one of the options. But that, I think, and again, this is one board member's extensive notes, trying to go back to what... Where we were at. It's just this... This, I would agree, this is not a policy. It's just giving a purpose and then stating that the whole procedure is in a handbook.
Lisa, you had a question or a comment?
Oh, yeah. So my memory serves me that we talked about this policy, but we talked about it is there's the law, which is what's stated in the policy, and then there's the procedure. And my understanding is we were gonna come back and look at a procedure that we would put in the handbook. And so to me, this policy reflects that, but I'm wondering, where's the procedure? Like, when are we gonna actually review the procedure? So that was... That was my recollection of it.
That sounds... That sounds about right. I mean, it's... That recollection sounds right, but the procedure, I think the different districts and how they've proposed, I think we had a few options presented. And my question is, and my recommendation, after spending all this time on it, is that our 201 remains. And then if the procedures change... Yeah, please, go ahead.
So all we have actually done is 201.1. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not... All we have done is actually voted to remove 201.1.
You did vote on that?
We voted to remove it.
I didn't think we voted to remove it.
We did. I'm looking at the school board summary from April 14th, 2025.
So you're gonna put it in procedure.
We do not have a 201.1.
Currently.
Currently.
Is that correct?
I'm looking at... I'm looking at the email from Martha right now.
Okay.
So...
Okay, okay. If we... If we voted to remove 201.1, because... No, I do have MSBA pulled up. MSBA does not have a model policy for vacancies.
Correct.
The... It's up to each board member, as long as you satisfy the minimum of the statute, and I highly recommend that we do have one. And believe me, I got that lecture from them repeatedly, that we put it in policy.
Right, which is why we went with this and then established that our procedure would then be in the handbook.
I'm not in favor of that. I would repeat that. So whatever's decided, I'm definitely not in favor of that. It... There's minimal transparency, a lot of different things that I stated before.
So then...
I don't have a preference, as long as we have our procedure written at some point.
I kind of agree with you, Jessica, but I am a little concerned about what you said, Mary, about different scenarios surrounding maybe an illness or a temporary type of thing that is an outlier.
Because we had to do that on the fly. It was right before you came on board, where we had a board member that had a serious illness and couldn't make it to a lot of stuff, so I just... And we had to go through that manually. And then again, at that time, we got the lecture from MSBA saying, where's your policy? Where's your policy?
Every one of those are covered under Minnesota Statute 123B dot 09.
Yeah, and that's...
That is under one Minnesota statute, and our procedures would cover every one of those, which is why I put multiple examples under there, so that we would all have ample time for everyone to look at it. They could call Director Bullion, myself, tell us what you liked, what you didn't like, so that we could then hopefully come up with one that everyone would be able to be very happy with again.
You're talking about the procedures.
Correct. Yep, so that we could put in the handbook, which is why we referenced it in letter A, so that wouldn't be hidden. If anybody saw board vacancy, right, there it is. Oh, cool, I'm gonna go into the board handbook. They could click the board handbook, scroll down, or Ctrl+F, and then we're doing hyperlinks, right? So handbook, I would assume, might be highlighted, and it's also in cross-references. So we're gonna highlight it there too. Boom, it goes directly to board vacancy. There it is. And we have even the whole policy plus the application. It's all gonna be there. Like, that is the intent, to have everything there, so it is completely laid out, and it's thoughtless. And guess what we do every single year? We come back and we look at the whole board handbook again.
So the question remains, since we voted, and our minutes state that we voted to remove policy 201.1.
We did.
So is this a moot discussion for tonight?
Well, then, if we voted to remove it, now we've got it sitting in here, so...
This is a study session.
No, I know, but I'm saying is, we voted to remove it. If that's the case, I remember choosing... There was... You gave scenarios in the initial one. I chose the second one, I think it was, and sent that back in. And then whatever happened, the board, majority board, if they voted to remove 201 dot 1, why is it back in here?
Because we never voted to actually put something back in for 201.1. It was moved.
Lisa? Go ahead, Lisa.
Everybody needs to look at the minutes. We voted on 201, not 201.1. So April 16th, I looked at the minutes... April 14th, I'm sorry. If you look at the minutes, we voted on 201, not 201.1.
201.1, school board vacancies, removal of policy.
So this is a new policy.
So you did have a first read, though, on March 24th.
Can I...
Yes, you may.
Jack.
Since... Okay, since there are some questions, March, April, September, December, can we... Can we table this one and bring it back and just get clarity on what we did and when? And I confess, I... I thought it sounded familiar when I was reading it for this meeting in particular, but I wasn't sure. Maybe I gotta trust my gut in that scenario, but maybe can... Can we move to just get clarity, so we don't have to take the time tonight? And then just bring it back? Is that okay with everybody?
I'm good with that.
All right. 203.5 is next on the list.
I'll make... Just really quick. Obviously, we're gonna remove the default notes. The Minnesota Commissioner, blah, 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 that's in there, obviously. And I was fine with this, but... And this is just me. Whenever I've read F on this one, it's been really confusing. It's kind of like, I know that we no longer print them out, and they've always been... They've been electronic for some time. But the way we edited this a while ago has always kind of bugged me. At least one copy of printed materials, including electronic communications relating to the agenda items in the meeting prepared are distributed by or at the direction of the school board or its employees, and then I is distributed at the meeting to all members of the governing body. What is distributed at the meeting? Because we used to do paper copies, and we don't. And it's just... And then 2, distributed before the meeting, it's just... Can't we just say we make it available to all members electronically, and there's one printed copy at the front? Or is this statutory? Because I didn't... I know that the legislator used to have this too, and it's... And they changed this. They drastically removed this, because they now do electronic voting. Everything is electronic. They don't hand out anything printed. They just need to make sure it's available. So the whole... This whole paragraph is been... Has always confused me, and it was in an original policy a while ago. And I know that we talked about it like four years ago and made some changes, so that basically talked about the electronic communications. And maybe it's just me, but when I read that, it's like, if somebody were to hold this...
What did it say?
Well...
I can confirm on the statutory part. But if not, I can make it read just like it does for open and closed meetings, because that's very... 99% of it is statutory. But basically read that, the first part, and then we... Because we do statutorily have to provide at least one copy to the public.
Right.
Just like what Martha does, and I can make it read exactly like that, and then...
And then electronic for everything else.
Everything from the letter I distributed down could be deleted.
Well, in the opening sentence, I know we already mentioned the statute. That looks like a... Friends... Excuse my saying, but it looks like a lawyer vomited on that first run-on sentence.
Correct.
So if there's a way we can make that concise and a little bit more accurate, I just don't want a member of the community saying, wait a minute, I'm sitting in here and I didn't get a paper copy, and we're not killing a tree. and we're not killing a tree for everybody, so, um.
So the.
Do you have a suggestion of how it could read?
Yeah, I'd do it exactly what Director Johnson just said and just say, this is what we do. Um, one copy made available to the public. Everyone else gets an electronic communication. It's distributed, uh, um, it's available by meeting time, which is what we're required to do. And for everyone else, it's available to all members. And we already stated above that it's available, uh, when the final copy is printed and when, um, and seven days prior when the agenda's ready. So.
And then just scratch everything from I down to one, I guess.
Are you, you're okay with that?
Yep.
I'm good.
I, I hope that you got that, Charles.
Yes.
I did, I did.
Thank you.
Is there any, um, support to change Friday at four P M. to Friday at noon? Under, uh, D, up two letters.
My only comment with that, that I sent in was, um, if we are going to state a time that we need to send questions in, I would like a stated time that the agenda will be avail, the supporting documents will be available to us with, you know, give us forty-eight hours before that. And with, you know, maybe the caveat that if something's late, then we reserve the right to ask a question late.
I'm just trying, I'm just wondering if, and I think I've said this to a number of you, if you'd have a better chance getting your question answered, um, or actually pretty quickly as opposed to getting in and late on Friday, maybe the person that Dr. Thomas needs to ask is already gone. And it might be something that's very simple. And, um, I, I, I think, I don't know, I, I just think it might help us be more efficient. It takes a little, I mean, it is Friday afternoon. You guys don't understand Friday afternoons. Um, I'm just wondering if that gives us a better chance of the goal, which is to get the question answered quicker. Or, or, and then even, even that, I mean, you know, Michael's getting ready to leave and he gets an email at five to four and how, how, and how does he deal with that? So I, I just, I'm just trying to make a, give, give the administration a little, little wiggle room. But it's a two-way street. As long as that, you know, stuff's out to us in time, um, then, then I think this might help. I'm, I'm just throwing it out there.
So I, I mean, here's the thing, there's always gonna be stuff that's a last-minute change. We, and usually in the agenda, they'll say TBD, that sort of thing. So you'll know in advance. Or we get a notice from Martha that says, okay, this was just updated, corrected. There's, and when we send in our questions also, sometimes we, I know I have pointed out typos and things. Um, and so there's an update, we get the notice from Board Book or she forces it out, that sort of thing. Uh, so I'm fine with that. I, I'm, I don't care if it's noon or four P M. Let's say, if you're, if you have a ton of questions, you haven't gotten them out by noon on Friday or even looked at them, then you're, you're probably not doing it till three thirty P M. anyways.
I understand.
Um, I don't know if it makes that much of a difference for administration where they get it at noon or four just because I'm sure a lot of work happens over the weekend and the first thing Monday morning, no matter what. But, um, if it, if it, if it helps better, I, I don't, I don't want somebody to say, well, I'm sorry, I didn't hand in any questions because I don't, it wasn't final. Um, that's not fair. Um, um, and, and that's, that's life. That's, that's gonna happen. So I don't wanna use that as a crutch.
If it doesn't help, then drop it. If, if.
But if it helps administration for noon, I'm fine with that, too.
I'm fine either way, whatever. But I would agree with Director Mason's comment.
Yeah, if I'm doing my things, it's Thursday night because I work Friday, right? So it's, you know, I can have him Friday at nine A M. if you want that to, whatever.
Right, right.
As long as I have everything to be able to look at it at night.
So, and your suggestion was, you know, forty-eight hours prior to the deadline to get questions in. Um, and so, you know, typically it's Thursday at noon is when Board Book is finalized by. And so that's not quite the forty-eight hours.
Challenging, yes.
Yeah, that's not the, that's not quite the forty-eight hours. So, um, you know.
I guess if, 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 if the, if board, boards now and in the future understand that, you know, a question at three thirty is probably gonna be answered Monday morning sometime or afternoon. It all depends. I'm just trying to, like I said, this, this doesn't help, this isn't, you know, this is gonna require a little bit of give and take.
Whatever's helpful to you, I mean, if it's helpful for you to have them earlier.
I would say, I would, yeah, I mean, earlier is good. But what we've also done as a practice, cause it just seems to go this way, is we get the questions and we're like, okay, we'll, we'll incorporate that or address those Monday at noon.
If, if that works.
Because many of you have asked the same questions that you've already emailed in. And so, you know, that way we can just share it all out for everybody, so the whole.
Yeah.
Um, so I think, and, and I think that's, that's fair push. And again, there's some data we just won't get, um, with this deadline based upon data that we don't control, tax information, et cetera. But I, I think that's a fair push either way. If we are submitting something, you know, on Tuesday, then we have really until Monday, you know, to, to ask a question wherever, you know.
And many times Board Book does have partial on Monday.
For sure, and I review what I can, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
So I think that we just have to figure out what the will of the board is. Is changing it to noon or leaving it at four? I'm, I'm fine with whatever the will.
I, I'm fine too, so we got three indecisive people out of seven right now.
Okay, I'll drop it.
Could we memorialize maybe the noon in the policy and ask that, that you try and push the staff to go, instead of Thursday at noon, you go close of business Wednesday before we say, maybe memorialize that in policy and see how that works.
Say, say that one more time, Director.
So, so we will memorialize noon in policy for us.
For staff to help staff.
And then you ask staff to try and finalize Board Book Wednesday.
Instead of noon on Thursday.
So, so like half a day for half a day, ultimately. And then, you, you know, give and take from, from both sides so that we can just, just try and, try and work it. And then.
Sounds good to me.
See how it works. And then if we need to, we can, we can memorialize it later on if it works.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yep.
Sounds great. And then, um, Director France, you suggested to remove the note. The Minnesota Commissioner of Administration has issued an opinion that the government entity is limited to acting only on the matters specifically included in the notice of a special meeting.
Well, first of all, we have nothing else in here on a special meeting. And second of all, the special meeting is covered in statute below and that's an exception, so.
Okay.
Um, so that was more or less like an informational note put into the template, wasn't it?
And we can remove that. Okay, just wanted to make sure I had your suggestion.
Removing's the best.
I have a clarif-
Sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Jess.
I think it's quick. Um, that same section in D, um, the middle sentence that says, questions raised during meetings that were not previously disclosed to the super and chair do not require a response in the meeting. Um, I guess I don't remember, I, I don't, I don't know what all my questions are before a meeting.
And that's fine.
So I, yeah. So, so that's what I'm saying. Do we take that sentence out?
Okay, so, go ahead.
Um, the, the reasoning behind that verbiage is, um, of course, board members always have questions that arise at the table. And that's, that, we're not trying to stop those questions. It's just if, if, and if the district staff doesn't have an answer, just like they often will then respond in an email or whatever. So just giving them the grace that they aren't required to, at the meeting, have an answer for a question.
So should that say, require an answer instead of a response? Cause they're gonna respond to your question that they don't have an answer.
Yeah.
Right, I guess that's my point, yeah.
Good point.
Yeah. Um, I think that's what you meant, yes.
Require an answer? I, I don't really know if there's really, really big a difference.
How it's written, it looks like you're not allowed to ask questions during the meeting.
No.
That's how it's, that's how I read it, though. I know that's not what you're saying.
Help us, help us.
Yeah, so I think it just, yeah, I think what you're, do not require a response by staff in the meeting or something like that. Or I don't know what the suggestion would be.
Especially in the fall, you know, after the comma and should not halt board action as described in the agenda. It is definitely not to limit, uh, discussion at the table. Um, it's, the, the goal behind it is to offer the district staff the ability to not have an answer and to, I mean, just like they.
Get it to when they can, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then also not halt. So there's important piece of that is to say that if I, like, if somebody sends in, let's say, all these questions that'll, you know, on Monday morning, for instance, and says, if I don't get this answer back, I'm not gonna vote on this. Or, or asking for a whole bunch of documentation, that's gonna be a pain to get out. That's what it's there to kind of say to staff, well, A, it's not a reason not to vote on it if you didn't get your question in on time. And, and you can always ask. And I think it does need to be softened a bit to say, you, you should be able to ask. And I, if I'm not mistaken, I think that what's happened in the past too is when a lot of questions like that come in, sometimes they do modify the materials in the board book so that they're automatically reflective if like three people have the same response.
Lisa, you had, I didn't wanna skip you.
Yeah, so in our last policy, um, Director Olson, we did have just the word that said, should not limit discussion. So basically you could, basically after the comma where it says, require a response in the meeting, comma, should not limit discussion and should not halt board action. So I agree, I read it the same way with the same concerns you did. Um, but I think we could fix it by just adding, should not limit discussion.
So after meeting, comma, should not li- limit discussion and should not halt, halt board action.
I don't think that was the way it was stated, um, before. And I think there was a specific reason why it was stated. So I, is, was this a direct quote from two oh three, five dot five dot one thirteen? I think it was a cut and paste, right?
I, I have it.
We, I think, just in order to keep moving with time, do we understand the intent? Are we okay? Is everyone okay if we play with the verbiage?
Yeah, please.
Is that okay with everyone?
Okay, we'll come.
I have one other question. I, I sent in about two, I said, about A.
Yep.
I just wanna understand why the one part was crossed out. So go back to A under procedures.
Yep, yep.
So why was that crossed out?
Oh, uh, under A, so we use the same language consistent with, uh, the approved policy two oh two, section four dot A dot two. And that wouldn't, that wouldn't, um, if the, if it's the will of the board, that parentheses would not remain. But that, um, the verbiage in A comes directly from that policy.
Okay, now I understand that, thank you. I think the part that's missing, though, is that if you read the next sentence, um, the intent of that procedure is that, that all board members, we do have input in the agenda because, um, you know, I'll call Chair White and say, hey, we missed something. Or, you know, we all add, because this is our meeting.
Oh, for sure.
And so all board members do provide input. And then it's the school board chair in conjunction with the superintendent to develop, prepare and arrange the meeting. And then I think another key word is for the tentative school board meeting agenda because the meeting agenda is not final until we get to the meeting when we all vote to approve the agenda. So I understand what you're saying, but I think for the intent of what this policy is, there's a piece of the intent that's missing, which is what's crossed out. So I actually support uncrossing out what you crossed out in A because I think it's an important piece of the, the policy.
I kind of think it's a duplicate, um, cause that happens anyways when we send out the agenda and then everyone can ask questions on it, um, anyways, cause the agenda's part, the agenda's released seven days in advance. And then all questions and everything like that on the agenda, as well as the content, are now by noon or whatever on Friday. So I do think that's duplication.
And I do agree with you, Director Atkinson. I do agree with what you said. And, um, I don't believe that, um, the crossing out of that, of those, the crossing out as proposed in the board book, um, I don't think that changes anything. Um, the, it is the, it is consistent, you know, consistent across policy. The agenda for meetings, yes, all, you know, all board members have input via, you know, their relationship with the chair and superintendent, um, in make, you know. I don't think that, I don't know. I hear what you're saying and I don't disagree with you. I don't, I don't think that, my personal opinion, again, just one, is that it doesn't make it not so.
So where can you show me in policy, where does it say that board members can have input into the, into the, developing the board agenda?
So, um, just even.
In this policy. And that is the right of, that is the authority and the right of every board member.
Yeah, so going to letter B, and that is consistent.
Those are not board members, though, that's the community. Um, letter B says, if you are a community member, you can place an item on the agenda.
That's persons.
Yeah, I understood that as like B and kind of felt like it contradicted with E too, Lisa. Like I was, it reading severe, maybe we need to say community if that's what that was intended. I was just confused.
So B is not specific to community.
It's not.
No, it's not. And that is straight from MSBA model policy. And that is what you commented, that you liked that language, that you like the language of B. That was your comment, that you like the language of MSBA's model policy. That persons wishing to place an item on the agenda must make a request to the school board chair and superintendent. So whether that's a board member or a community member wanting to, uh, have something discussed at an upcoming board meeting. The person making the request is encouraged to state the blah, 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 okay.
Yeah, the, a board member wouldn't state their name and their address.
Right, right. But, and I hear what, I hear what you're saying, but this is, that, that letter B is straight from MSBA model policy. And what I felt like, and again, this, I think we've had conversations about that, Director Johnson. I, I think Chair White, we also did. Um, we have been running into at our study sessions when we have the, um, the agenda item for future agenda items that is an actual agenda item. Uh, we've been, that's been, um, you know, in most recent history, it's kind of been going off the rails. We've been having a lot of time spent almost having discussions on items. And to alleviate that, this policy for bringing things to the agenda could help alleviate that.
I felt like it contradicted with E was my comment, too.
Let's reach out.
E is more, is, is based on Robert's rules.
So, and that's the other thing, so, and here's.
That's how Robert's rules reads.
Right, but like, they don't work together.
Well, Robert's rules actually not only reads that way, but Robert's rules also talks about, as we have in other stuff, I think, if it's coming up here, is that board members have to be prepared for the discussion, right? Um, and, um, and then there's the other thing about proper notice and not, and informal board meeting not going off of the agenda. So, uh, one of the things that's been talked about in the past, and I know we allude to this, but we don't actually do it, and I put it in my notes also when I sent it in, is that the boards often, and I agree with this practice, that say that once the agenda's finalized, you can remove something off of the agenda, but you can't add to it. Um, because then you got a community who doesn't have proper notice. You can't hold board members accountable for actually getting questions in on an agenda they weren't familiar with. Um, and, and also being prepared. So that was kind of done with our board operating norms that said you had to be prepared and therefore there was no surprises. But again, sometimes we have to remove stuff off of an agenda because something isn't available, like we did the, um, Native American Parent Committee, and they were not able to come to the meeting. So we made an adjustment to the agenda at that time. But that was something that was put into the original norms. And kind of, we never really changed this historically, but that was the assumption that we would never add to the agenda at the time of the agenda.
So, to try to move things out, cause I was, maybe you weren't here, Lisa, when I, trying to finish up policy to the extent we could by ten fifteen because we do have a, do have a close.
Ten fourteen.
We do have a closed session, we, we're trying to get to, and I don't want, I want to be respectful of already having to get up. So I'm wondering if, specific to this, um, you, you add this language in A to be, to be consistent with the policy referenced.
Yeah.
Is the old language necessarily inconsistent? Or is it just slightly different? I mean, what, what?
I think it adds to.
I'm, I'm just wondering, I, I, as I read these, the two sentences on top of A and then the crossed out part, I'm thinking, what's the big deal with what we had? If it's not word for word with two oh two, four, A dot, two, does it really matter? Is it close enough?
Well, I think.
Does that alleviate the concerns of, um, you know, some members about making sure that the board is mentioned as, yes, we all have an opportunity to make our input known? I'm just wondering if we, does that, did that change even need to be made? In, you know.
I, I understand exactly what you're saying. And this is the, the challenge that Director Johnson and I have, have been entrusted with. That it was the will of the board to go with MSBA model policy as the base. And so what we've been trying to bring forward is marrying, as best, best we can, what we've had to what, and then, you know, we've, we've approved some changes. And so we're trying to not only do consistency across.
I hear you.
And so we, we are tasked with bringing forward, as best we can, what we've brought forward. And then it is up to the rest of us as a team, as all seven of us, to, okay, uh, how, how should it read?
And, and I, to be fair, we didn't say, "use MSBA model policy." We said to compare it and, and for you guys to start with it, we never said to eliminate, what, almost forty years of, of building these up to match the way that we've been doing board meetings either. Uh, because there's a reason behind everything, even, you know, when Chair White, when you were on the board prior to this, there are reasons you put things in there because of, you know, MSBA doesn't tell you half the things you should do. Uh, they basically say, "here's the minimum, the rest is up to you guys." That's why so many, that's why so many school districts look so unique and different, as long as you're not violating statutes. So I just wanna make that clear.
So then I guess, because I wanna be respectful of everybody's time.
Yeah.
Um, we aren't gonna get there tonight. It's fine. Is there consensus on A to leave the addition and leave, uh, what, what's presented here? Does anybody have a problem with, I know Lisa does, a problem with A as presented?
I'm fine with A as presented as well as B, and I like the way B reads also, so.
That's, I like the way A and B is presented.
Mr. Charles, same. Jess?
I'm fine.
Okay, it looks like we have consensus to leave that as presented. And, um, if there's nothing else on two oh three point five, unfortunately, um, I think we need to move on to, uh, the future agenda topics quick and then move to closed session. Just before anybody has future agenda topics, I'd like to run something by everyone, maybe alleviate some confusion or, and some ability to kind of think ahead. Would it be, uh, agreeable to the board, um, if, instead of having future agenda topics presented at ten eighteen at night at a study session, uh, to have them emailed to me and actually put on the agenda ahead of time so people know, okay, Director Atkinson had, you know, topic X that she's wanting on the agenda. So instead of trying to make a snap judgment on whether or not it's warranted, you have a little bit of time to at least bounce it around in your head so that when we come to that, we, I can just tip, tick them off, you know, Amy wanted this on the agenda. Consensus? Yes, no? And, and would that make this a little more efficient?
I like that because it also allows you to try to figure out what the question or ask is instead of trying to drill down into that live in the meeting. That way you can, you can negotiate that with the individuals sent you there to kind of get it down succinctly instead of doing it with everybody here and then read them off and then, and then figure out what people agreed to, to be on the agenda. So I like that idea a lot.
It's following B.
Is that cool with everybody? So tonight, we'll, we'll take suggestions and then moving, does that need to be memorialized? Or do we just say we're gonna do it that way?
Actually, what, what Director Bullion just said is it's following B. She's absolutely right.
Okay, perfect.
I'm kinda already in there.
All right.
We can, we can memorialize it in the handbook.
Oh, that would be greatly appreciated. We would do that moving forward. So for tonight, uh, anybody have any future topics that they would like to bring to the, for future, um, study sessions?
Um, I just have a question.
Sure.
We had talked about the dashboard for accountability of, um, where we're at from proficiencies, um, that type of thing. When will we, when are we gonna see that? Because I thought that was gonna be done by the end of the school year.
Yeah, so I have a tentative draft of that in one of my artifact folders. And we'll be sharing more about that and kind of getting a better understanding of what other things we should include in it on the sixteenth of June. So that we can finalize everything and kind of launch that for next year.
Great. I look forward to seeing that. Thank you.
I would like to discuss, um, uh, survey data that's being presented. If others agree, um, just the content and how it's presented and.
Specifically, we've just surveyed data in general?
Yeah.
As, as we take them?
Right, because there's been several that go out. I think they're heavily redacted. Do they need to be? Like, just stuff like that.
Okay. Uh, is there any will to discuss how we are presented with survey information?
Yes.
You are in favor of that?
Absolutely.
So a discussion as to the rationale, I wanna make sure I'm getting this right. You want admin to say, to tell us, this is why we present the information the way we present it?
Yeah.
That was that you're looking for?
Or can we have just a full?
Or you're looking for a board to maybe ask for more information than we're getting? Or less redacted information? Which one are you look asking for?
I think the ask is, can we, is there a reason why we just can't get full data results? And what is the reasoning for the heavily redacted survey? Um, and also trying to save your admin time, like, it seems like a lot of time spent on redacting surveys that.
So we have a yes and a yes.
I would say yes if, like, the redactions are based by, based on, I mean, statute, statutorily, what is?
Are they? Because we're board members.
Absolutely.
Data privacy, it absolutely.
Every, everything.
I would just say, they're not getting, are getting full results.
Uh, Lisa.
No.
Sorry, it's hard to chime in this. Um, other districts I know for a fact are getting full survey results. We are the board of directors. We are, um, there's no reason to redact data. Um, I understand if it's a student name or something like that. I think that's the conversation that maybe you're looking for, Jessica. I think maybe consistency of what to expect from the, from, um, as the board receiving data, what to expect. Um, because I, I think there's been some inconsistencies in our district is what I'd like to understand. Um.
And how do we save them time? Like, do we need to redact everything we're redacting? Like, I went and read the CPM one, and the word math is redacted. Like, they're heavily redacted. So I don't, just discussion around what needs to happen. How do we?
I, I support the discussion.
Well, if, if math was redacted, you shouldn't have seen it, so.
You can only assume.
Oh, you can assume the word.
You know what happens when you assume?
Well, I know.
Like, making assumptions is.
That's why we shouldn't redact.
So you're, are you good, Amy? Or no? Yes?
I, I think that, um, that, is it a board discussion? Or is it a question that you can just ask administration? That's my question, like.
Well, I guess I'm curious, do others care? Like, is it?
I mean, like, in my experience, and it's only two, a little over two years, but in my experience, the amount of information that the district is offering to the board is more than in past. So offering all of the, you know, giving all of the survey results. I mean, typically, the, the, the district would bring forward whatever, you know, information that they'd bring to a meeting. I, I think that it's, am I misspeaking, Dr. Thomas?
This is like the discussion I guess we want to have, right? Do we need to discuss it?
Right, and I'm just, my, the whole redaction thing is, it's, it's statutorily driven. And, and, uh, speaking that other district's board get, uh, all, you know, unredacted information, I don't know that to be true. I, I mean, you're telling me that you have, but I don't know that to be true. And if that is true, are they giving information that they shouldn't be giving? Because, um.
That's the discussion I wanted to have.
That's the discussion, yeah.
Is that a board table discussion?
I don't think it is. I think it's, I think it's, I think that maybe that's an individual discussion, um, with the administration to make sure everyone understands. Or you, I understand, uh, but if, if there's a question of why something's redacted and you have a specific question on a line item or something, then I, I, I think that that would be an individual administrator, uh, question.
There's a few of us asking it, sorry.
And, and furthermore, um, to be fair, um, the re, I, I don't, we, it historically never had anyone ask for every single comment either. We've kind of, um, trusted administration to synthesize it so we understood the pattern so you're not cherry picking stuff out because the concept of the survey is to understand where the survey takers as a whole, where they're leaning and, and the, and the synergy between the statements, not the cherry picking of certain words or statements out of that, um, because there's thousands of them. Um, so if the issue is.
I mean, I can explain why now, but I think that's not the purpose of this.
Well, well, I'm trying to figure out why the question of why anyone would wanna see that amount of data, six, ten thousand lines of data sometimes. That's my, that's my question. And.
This is discussion, I think.
This is the discussion.
Okay.
Can I just add context? I was watching a Farmington board meeting. I think this might be relevant. And they got a copy of all their stakeholder survey results in a PDF format, totally unredacted. And then the board is able to go into that PDF and put in a search term of iPads. And then they can see that there's twenty-five people, twenty-five comments that support iPads. There's fifty comments that, so it's really a very, much of an efficiency for a board to be able to evaluate the data. I know that other districts, I do not wanna name them, but I know three off the top of my head that get stakeholder survey comments unredacted. And I think, you know, Dr. Thomas, you said it best. You said, I think at our last meeting, to the teacher comments, we read them all. And so I think it's, I mean, this is, I think, the discussion we wanna have. So I think we're getting too far in the weeds. But when I, when I watched the last Farmington board meeting, I, it really like hit home that, yeah, as a board, we should be, we should have access to those comments and be able to read them.
Yeah, okay, I'm, I'm think we're, I think, I'm, I'm actually in favor of it. I think, uh, we'll, I'll, I will write it down and put it on a, a future, uh, agenda. Anyone else for? Okay, all right. Uh, I gotta move to closed session first, or no? Okay, now, well, doesn't matter. No? Um, I will now entertain a motion to enter into closed session for the purpose of discussing, uh, negotiation strategy with, uh, PLSEA. Is there a motion on the table?
Second.
By Director Johnson, second by Director France. All on paper, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.